Call in this special meeting or if we could please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance here again. For those who aren't here, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. You, I can't remember if you sent them under our agenda, but we still have to go. On approval of the meeting agenda, is the motion approved. Ms. Tatum, turn your second. Dr. Francis, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Mr. Rayman, yes, that's a zero. Thank you very much. All right, so the action item tonight is the 2019-2020 Superintendent Goals. So as you were all aware, we are thrilled to have Dr. Jones here with us.
Woo-hoo!
Although she seemingly kept showing up before July 1st, but now she's permanently moved in. If you haven't seen the office up, stop on by. So, Dr. Jones, I'll turn it over to you.
Do I have to hold it down?
Yes.
Just let me know when you want to go to the
Oh, if you'll go ahead and put it up, that would be helpful. Thank you. As we look at the draft of the goals, first of all, and I know I had sent the board a little bit of a kind of a heads-up before, just so that you knew what you're looking at, where the goals are stated, for instance, on the first one. Oh. Yeah, that's what I'm doing right now. Yep. So when you look at Goal 1, where it says growth and student achievement, the goal is based on the format that's recommended by CAPS and also by CAE, and it's what we consider a mutual agreements format. So those are actually superintendent goals that you would expect, like through a superintendent evaluation. Underneath that goal, you'll see the strategic plan target area, so that the goal that I'm working on has something to do and is related to our current strategic plan. So I'll just, I'll walk you through. I know you've reviewed, and thank you to those of you who are able to send some comments. On the first goal, this is with our strategy for data information and management system. And in a nutshell, this was very much about looking at ECRIS, which I've had a lot of conversations with several of you, also in watching the board meetings, really getting to establish, is this the right system? Is it going to do what the board has wanted it to do? So I will work with the cabinet to determine next steps to refine the current ECRIS information and data management system, or recommend a new direction. And when you look at this format, it's the "so that" is telling you why it's important, and then my specific commitments at the bottom, and those are the deliverables, would be to establish a secure analytics dashboard, to provide access to real-time data to support individualized learning, and to examine the Connecticut Next Generation Accountability Report for students' performance with growth. This growth model is new in Connecticut. We didn't have it when this plan first started, so we want to also look at how can we incorporate that. There's some great information in the next accountability reports. The second goal you're looking at is tied to all the strategies, 1 through 4, and this is really to go back and do a good look back at the five-year history, and to look at our accomplishments and our challenges. And the deliverable for this is right down on the bottom, to provide an update on each strategy from a systematic pre-K through 12 view, by grade level, by school site, or by program, unique implementations, and to look at, again, not accomplished in progress or accomplished. So we know down to the finite level where we were successful, and maybe in something we weren't successful, there's a good reason for it. Maybe we didn't buy the software, or something didn't work in the way that we wanted it to work. Then from this, we'll also create a staff work plan for 2019-2020. And a staff work plan is more than what you see in the goals, and that's the one thing I want to reinforce tonight. These are superintendent, you know, bigger goals, systemic. In the work plan, you're going to see things like the capital projects we're working on. We'll have an operations section where we want to be working on Cardinal Stadium, HAMAB, all of those projects. In the work plan, you'll see things like food service. You know, we've had a lot of conversations about that, but those show up in the work plan as part of really underneath this goal. So let's go to the next one, which is review of strategies 1 to 4. And this one is really to set the vision for the next five years, and to be working on getting us to the point for a 2020-2025 new strategic plan. And I am working right now, we had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago, with the Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, and they've asked for a timeline to accomplish community engagement, to include community visioning, superintendent listening tours, community input surveys, to get us to the point that we feel very well informed to prepare for that next strategic plan. Now, will we be at a point in the spring that we're able to draft that and move forward? It's going to depend a lot on the input that we get from our community, because the board has had some conversation, and we did at the ad hoc, and it's, I think this board has said that we don't expect the real basis of the plan to change drastically, but based on the input, there may be some, some things that we will want to tweak. The next goal that you're looking at is to study the GPS current budget and the initial program snapshot reviews. And if you're looking at the paper copy, I guess you can sit up there and yell at it. That was added since you saw this even yesterday. When, when I first fit this together, I did not have a good enough understanding of where we were on the program reviews to actually commit to really almost anything other than just to look at what we have. I feel much better today, based on some meetings that I've had. So with that, I will be able to present a budget to the board, which will accommodate strategic thinking for 2020-2021. And the reason that's important is because the budget we're going to work on this fall is a budget that gets implemented with a new strategic plan. So we need to really understand what we've accomplished, where are we, so that this budget is thoughtful to help us moving forward, because it's difficult to build a budget a year in advance. Then to look at the implement of Bloom-Shapiro recommended processes as deemed actionable. And again, that's known by audit. The actual name on the, the information that we received is operational assessment, so that's what I'm talking about. So the Bloom-Shapiro is, again, it, you'll notice it says recommended processes as deemed actionable, and it doesn't just say we're going to do it all. And the reason it's written that way is we have a consultant working with us. If the consultant says we need a piece of software or something to really go to full implementation, it could take us 24 months. It could take us 18 months, because it may be budgetary. So I don't want to assume that it's going to be simplistic. I think it's pretty challenging work. The third item is to complete the instructional program snapshot reviews. And it says instructional, that doesn't include the special ed audit that you've talked about. That's a whole separate, that's not a snapshot view that the board has discussed, but this is all those instructional competing pieces. But again, special education is a separate item that we'll be looking at in our work plan, to figure out how to move forward and looking at what the board's requested. So the next goal is 4, and community relations. And this is really to establish consistent and proactive communication mechanism from the superintendent and central office with the staff, community, and the Board of Education. And it specifically says proactive, because as I've started my visits with all of you, listening to, I've met with all of our principals, leadership team, this is what keeps it coming up, is that we're more reactive, not enough proactive. And so I really want, especially as we have somebody new coming in into communications systems at the time, for us to think about how can we be more effective in helping not just our school community, but even the broader community, understand what's happening. The second one, what you're seeing on Goal 5, is really the communication between the superintendent and the Board of Education. And again, to be proactive, collaborative, and have ongoing communication. And this is something else that I've heard, that I can help, and I think we can maybe communicate more effectively as a team, a collaborative team, and making sure that, for instance, weekly updates to you, that's something that I'm committing to as part of this. And I think you've seen one of those that I did on Friday. I try not to make them too long, but long enough that you'll be well informed, but then also we'll be looking at what are the other ways that we can continue to communicate more effectively. For Goal Number 6, this is working with the leadership and staff to study personalized learning from the lens of the transdisciplinary units. And this comes from our, you know, from the strategic plan, renewed pre-K curriculum with and without technology. And I say with and without technology, because I've watched a lot of your meetings. And I think that from the community standpoint, it's looking at how are we really, the hands-on component, when you think about even STEM or STEAM, what are we doing? So we want to clarify, analyze, and record the systemic use of personalized learning across all the school sites. And again, that's, what are we doing in kindergarten, in every school? What are we doing in 7th grade in all three middle schools? And this will, part of this is just gathering the information first, and then just really looking at, what is the next step? And one of you had sent a note about possibly accelerating quicker, but I think part of that is, I have to know, first of all, where are we, and is accelerating the right thing, and what does that look like? And that's going to take a lot of work with the leadership team as well, all of our principals, headmaster, everybody together. On the bottom one, on 6.2, this is, I think, a given, but I think it's important to have it on here, that I am going to model professionalism in my tone, in my statements, mannerisms. You know, we have meetings, anybody that's ever been at this table or in the role that I'm in, you'll have meetings that get challenging, and so I make that commitment, you know, publicly, that that's something that I will do, is model kind of that best practice. And then also just to provide ample data for questions, comments, and concerns. I think it's really important, when the board asks questions, community asks questions during the budget, that we give you thorough information. So that's something I'm committing to. And then also the multilingual documents. That was, again, suggested from under board, to continue to enhance that, and I'm committed to do that. So I think, take questions now, if, for it be helpful?
Discussion. Ms. Kay.
I'm not going to give you the number of the goal, but it's the one on personalized learning and the expansion across schools and grades. I'd like to know if, as part of that goal, the board will have an understanding of the methodology that you'll use to make the decision to fully integrate personalized learning in the system. I didn't understand from your very, very brief verbal description, how that would happen, and whether that would be presented in a retreat to the board, or formulated by the cabinet, or in consultation with the building leaders. Could you help us understand that one?
Sure, and that was Goal 6.1. So when I look at what I'm going to do, the statement is that I'll work with leadership and staff to study personalized learning. And what I really want to understand is, number one, are we all talking with the same language in what we think is personalized learning? What does that really look like? Is it the same across pre-K 12? And if I'm a parent and my child is at this school, and you're a parent and your child's at another elementary, are we having the same experience? Are we having an experience because the leader in the building understands personalized learning more than a leader perhaps in another building? Have we had the same professional development opportunities? And for me, it's, part of it is figuring out where we are. As I've watched the meetings all through the spring, I don't, I don't really have a handle on, and I know it's there, staff will know, which buildings do we have wave 1 or wave 2, and what does it look like even across high school? Is it across all content areas? Is it just teacher by teacher? And trying to really get a handle on that. The next layer to that is going to be, really, what, what is making learning personal? What does that mean? And does it have to involve technology to make learning personal? I think we all know that it doesn't. So it's how do we actually even think about our messaging to the community as we go 2020-2025 to take it to the next level? Because personalized learning's been around for a while, and I know, I had that conversation with one of you. You know, if you go back 2008, 2009, it was starting to emerge in the country. So when you look at 2020-2025, is that where, where we're going to be, where it seems like it's attached more to technology than actually about the learning? And so I think that's going to be part of this analysis as well.
Yeah.
Dr. Francis.
Just a quick comment, which is, we do have built into our agenda for next year, agenda plan, the sort of strategic plan, sort of to-be-determined topics. So if we feel like that would be an appropriate update for us, and sort of the strategic plan topic, that could fall into that slot.
Ms. Rayman.
So thanks, Peter Scher, for sending your feedback, and I think a lot of what you were mentioning, I can see nested in some of this information. But Tony, where exactly would we see things like hiring, you know, a headmaster at GHS, or identifying a succession bench for the cabinet, things like that?
Yeah, I, and thank you for sending the comments to the CDU, it was very helpful. I see that as just part of management. I mean, that's, that's the expectation of me as a school superintendent, is to get people hired, get them in the right places. You know, as far as the headmaster, that position, it'll depend on what's happening in the building. We have an intern there right now. We want to look at things like the climate survey. We may have somebody there that's actually going to have more knowledge and impact than we can get hiring somebody from the outside, but I don't know that until we really get into the year and look, but that'll be a management decision.
Ms. Doe.
First of all, thank you for putting this together. This is really well thought out. I like that you used the CAE-CAPS model, since we've become very well, you know, pretty familiar with that for PGC, so appreciate this. I guess to be a little bit self-serving, how do you suggest that we're going to work better together? Can you give me some specifics about building a collaboration on the board? I think we did a good job tonight, we had an 8-0 vote here. So, so coming off of that, what other ideas do you have for building our, building our team?
I think part of it is making sure that you're well informed before you ever get to the meetings, so that, and part of that's my job, to make sure you have all the information, so that by the time we get to a meeting, there are few surprises, that I've been able to answer all of your questions. And I think that's part of that whole collaborative. So when you get to the table, it doesn't mean you all agree, but you already have a good understanding of what, where those opinions are, are based from. I think that's part of it. I also think I have to do a good job at working with the committees, and some of you have talked about that, that we have a budget committee, we have policy, making sure we use the committees effectively, because it's really easy to have a committee that doesn't really get to the meat of the work, and that's the whole idea of having committees. So I think that's part of it. And then I think it's going to be ongoing conversations, and having several new board members in the fall. I think that we're going to have to spend, again, I'll have to do a whole nother round of getting the people.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Scher.
I'm sorry, we, just process for a second. Were approved, were asked to approve these when?
Tonight. So if you have suggestions, now's the time.
Okay, and these are the goals that we will use next June to evaluate performance of Tony Jones?
And throughout the year.
I guess I, I like goals of the variety that are focused on accomplishments, not job descriptions or efforts. So I see a lot of things here that are kind of like motherhood and apple pie, that I think that was the whole point of hiring Dr. Jones, that she will do anyway. I would rather see a list of goals that are a little bit more, I'd like to see fewer of them, at least at the board level, for us to evaluate. And I don't want to evaluate goals of stuff, you know, you go out and meet with the community, meet with the staff, of course, right? Evaluating the, your professional staff, of course. I would much rather be evaluated, I think the board should be living in the box of evaluating you, not on those things, but on specific things that the board thought were important to get accomplished, whatever those are. So I, I love the format of this list, the CAE-CAPS, it's nice, clean, clear format, but I would like to see us pick fewer goals and have them be very accomplishment-oriented. To Ms. Neal, she's always talking about SMART goals. You know, there are things that are, actually, we can look at, point at, and they happened by this date and time. And I don't know what they ought to be. I put down a list of 10 things that I shared with board, that, a little different than what I commented, sent you, Tony, that just gave them the list of the potential, that I would think we need to get, the organization needs to get, not, you can't get all pinned done, but there are things like, I would think it was an accomplishment, whether or not you got the new leader at GHS or not. Where you get them from, are they the right person, whether you get them inside, that to me isn't the goal. The goal is, it happened, and you got the right leader there. A goal would be, you got phase 1 of Cardinal Stadium done or not done by the end of the year. The initiatives, as an example, they got delivered to the board, or they didn't get delivered to the board. I worry about goals that are, where the board's inside, kind of your processes. That to me feels like managing and micromanaging. So I would, I mean, it's great you're signaling you're going to go do all these things, but I, I wouldn't think of them as giving them to you as goals to be evaluated against. As an example, this issue of data and what have you, to me, that's, I wouldn't even put that on the top 10 list. So this is where I am. I think there's more strategic things that need to get accomplished to move the district forward, and I'd love to see goals that are reflective of that.
Ms. Olson.
Tony, I think this is really helpful, and I appreciate all the, all the, all the work that into it. And I also, I understand that it says as deemed actionable, because I don't, I think there's a lot of, obviously, there's a lot of unknowns. I think it's, I don't know how you would necessarily say at this particular day, at this particular time, I can give exactly this, but maybe you might have a different answer to that, I'm not sure. In terms of data, I think, I'm, I do think that there's, there's, that's going to be a process, you know? I mean, even before, before my time, we were, we had somebody who had said, I'm going to be able to do this, 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 and this, at this particular time, and growth has been one of our top goals, looking at the growth model. And so going forward and pursuing that, and being able to show data and show growth is, is one of our top goals, or I, from what I've seen and heard as a board. And I do think there's other things in there, like, you know, there's places where we have effective leadership in the cabinet, there's places where we don't, you know? And actually, I'm glad you mentioned the special ed audit, and that that wasn't part of this, because that, that needs to happen. There's, like I said, there's ineffective leadership, and I think, I have no doubt that, that things are going to change for the better. I have no doubt.
Dr. Francis.
So I feel like most of these, to me, are pretty specific, actionable. You know, the dashboard is something we've been asking for, I think that's a very specific thing that we want to see. The, the data, so that we've asked many times, you know, we want to make sure data is available to teachers, to everybody to look at, I think that's pretty specific. Exam the next generation, you know, that's up to you, I don't, I disagree with it, but I think that's fine. Strategies, look at each specific strategy, I think that's, you know, pretty specific. The work plan, I think that's pretty specific. I mean, I think, I don't need to go through every one, but I think the pretty significant majority of these, to me, I think are, you know, on target in terms of things that we've been talking about and being pretty specific. Yeah, I think it gets a little more mushy when it sort of creates a predictable system of information flow. All right, not so specific, but I think it probably is something that we need to do. And when I go through the list, which, you know, Peter, I think it was, it was a nice list, I agree with most of it. Personally, I think, you know, hiring the headmaster, to me, I think that's, that's a pretty specific sort of operational kind of thing that needs to happen. I think that is the role of the superintendent, to be involved in, you know, making sure we've got administrators in all of the positions that are there. I'm not sure I would put that on a list of goals. I'm a little less clear about the education, the special ed review, because I was thinking, we had already talked about this, as we're getting that UConn report in the fall, and we had talked about this was going to be a discussion that we would have in terms of what are we looking for at that point, what are we going to be looking for in a review? And I felt that that was something that was going to be sort of a more broader board discussion and a creation kind of together, as to what the next step would be, because I'm not sure we've been really clear about what we want from that. So I, I feel like that, that's, I'm a little on the fence with that one, because I feel like that would really be a more collaborative and potential, almost more of a board goal.
They're examples.
No, no, I understand, but I'm trying, I'm just trying to be sort of specific as we look through this, because you're saying, you know, there's not specific enough goals. I think like most of these are pretty specific, and then when I look at the specific one that you've given, I'm just saying, here's, of those, I think there's some that I don't agree with, and I think most of the rest of them are covered. So overall, I'm pretty happy with the goals as they're written.
Thank you. Ms. Tatum.
So I'd like to share with the board what the top, top priorities are, and everything else is negotiable, but the first three goals absolutely have to get done. The dashboard is how we communicate to the RTM, the neighborhood associations, and our key constituents on our results. If we don't communicate our results, I'm not sure why we're serving an elected office. The next one is to give parents an idea of the growth of their own individual student. That's absolutely critical. The work plan that backs up the strategic plan is how the board will know things are actually being accomplished, that we don't have access to because it's management. So I, and then the last one, those snapshot reviews will give the board an idea of how to build the budget, because we'll know which programs to invest in and which programs to disinvest in. So top three goals, your specific commitments to me are absolutely on target. Goals 4, 5, and 6, if you want to shorten the list, I'm open to that. Those are things that I know Dr. Jones will take care of, I have full faith that will happen.
Ms. Rayman.
When I first saw these, I was not delighted with the format, me and the SMART goals mantra, but I think, I mean, obviously, CAE and CAPS think this is a great format, and it is in a lot of ways, and I think it's specific as, as it can be for someone who's walking into a new job. And I think the emphasis on the communication and being proactive is something that we need to do desperately, that we haven't been doing, always reacting to things. And I like the emphasis on the communication, the family and community communication, because I think that's something that we need to do. We might communicate thoroughly well with our parents, but I think in the broader community, we certainly fail in, in that area. And again, I like the idea that we will communicate to the people in the community who speak various languages. I think that's important to engage them as well. So I, the other thing I liked was the reference to Bloom-Shapiro, because I think that will help us, you know, monitor our capital plan and help us to move that along, and I think that was really, one of the highlights of, actually, this year, the Bloom-Shapiro report, because I really think it gives us a guide to move forward with the BET in a, in a very systematic way. And hopefully, in the long run, it'll make everybody's life easier, because the processes will be that much clearer. So basically, I'm happy with the goals. I will learn to adapt to the format, but I think that they're good, they're measurable, and, and I think they're quite clear.
Peter, you. Peter? I'd like to thank Dr. Jones for actually paying attention to our board meetings from day one, of starting to be interested, because this is
She's still here.
She's still here. This is very reflective of what we've been talking about for the past few months, things as we've dealt with our budget, things as we've dealt with issues as they've come up, knowing that we've got a year left on our strategic plan, and thinking forward to what do we want to do, what do we need to do. You know, you could have come in and said, I'm going to do the listening tour, right? Every superintendent that's come to town has done the listening tour. You started that, it's not listed specifically as a goal, because it's something that you're doing. Yes, you're going to appoint staff, yes, you're going to think about how we're staffed in leadership and administration and all the rest of it. You seem to understand that's part of doing your job. You know, I appreciate somebody that comes in and says, yeah, 3 to 5 goals is the right number, but these are all very important, and I'm going to do them. So I truly hope a year from now, you know, before a year from now, that we're sitting here and talking about how this is great, and you're building off this to the next set of goals, so I very much look forward to that conversation. Ms. Rayman.
I could probably, oh.
I don't like this one.
There's nothing wrong with it. I will adjust it appropriately.
I could go back to my notes, I could probably figure it out, but I think that they also align to our board goals. So there was synergy there, and I don't remember how often we look at the superintendent in terms of evaluating. I know we do it at the end of the year, and, or at least twice. So given the fact that you aren't new coming in, and maybe there isn't some specificity, because you're still getting the lay of the land, is there just a way to do more checkpoints so that, you know, the work plan, I'm envisioning, that could be really big, or it could be really small, you know? I would prefer something really well-done for fewer things versus, you know, peanut-buttering, you know, a bunch of things.
This is peanut butter. Dr. Jones, would you like that?
Yeah, I mean, generally, when I do a work plan, I think it's, it probably looks larger to the board, because we have a large staff that are because we have a large staff that are over different areas of the district. So it's not overly intensive for any one department, but it accomplishes a lot because everybody's held accountable for what's going on in their job roles. So, and we'll work on that together. And some of it should look familiar, things that you're expecting to happen and, you know, what are we saying we're going to accomplish this year? What is the work that we're going to do?
Ms. Dow.
Are you, do you want to take anything off or are you happy with your goals?
I'm the sort of person, I wouldn't bring it to you if I didn't think I could do it. And that's why, that's why actually it was changed even today on the program, snapshot reviews. Because after I had talked to some board members and had comments, they really wanted me to complete the instructional ones. And I wasn't there yet because I didn't really understand what we had done, where we were. But I feel much better tonight to be able to present that to you.
Mr. Scher.
Tony, I'm glad to approve these goals. I just want to signal though, there's a whole bunch of other stuff that's on our list that was committed by your predecessors. And, you know, I don't, you know, I was clear, I thought this should have, you know, a bit more time to bake, but I guess we're approving it now. So I will tell you, there's a bunch of other stuff I might expect to have gotten done this next year because if it doesn't get done, then we probably haven't moved the system forward. So I just want to be upfront about that so there's not a surprise about that. And I'll be, for me, for me, I'll be taking that into account, evaluating the performance at the end of the year. Because, you know, some of this stuff is going to be a little bit mushy. So since people are comfortable with mushy, and that's okay. It just puts the same position we're doing evaluation of its, it's open for interpretation and a little less than, you know, hard specifics that got done or didn't get done.
Dr. Francis.
So I'm curious as to, I mean, you obviously gave this list of 10. And I think, you know, most of that's either addressed or I think you sort of looked at it and said, I mean, that would be part of the job. And the only one I sort of said I think is a little hard to know for sure is just sort of the time work and the framework of the special ed review. Is there something you have in mind other than that? Because I think it would be fair, even if it doesn't get on paper for the official goals. I mean, I think it needs to be out there. I think you need to state it because we certainly can't expect her to have accomplished it if we haven't told her what it is.
I think you're going to evaluate her as you think, right? You're going to use these goals to evaluate her. We're all going to give our input. And, you know, I use those as examples. They're, and I made that clear to the board when I sent it to you. I didn't see anything else shared from anybody else. So maybe there was, but maybe I didn't see.
Well, I think it was not to reply at all, but that's okay.
Okay, I didn't see anybody else, I didn't see anybody else providing any input. Maybe I missed it, right?
But what I'm asking specifically is, do you have specific things on the list that we should discuss whether we think that is appropriate as an expectation? And I think to be fair.
Well, I don't think it's a we. I think it's, everybody's got to kind of, think about that, right? If these goals get passed, right, they'll get passed. I'm just clear as an example. If we come out on the other end and we're doing a budget, you won't be here. You won't be here, a couple people won't be here. But if we come out on the other end with a budget and we don't have a program review and we're doing a budget without program review, we're going to have a problem.
So what else is on your list of things that you think is not included that should be?
That's on here. That's on here. That's on here.
Right, no, I understand that. And that's my point. So I think there's something, I'm only saying something simple, Kate, let's not conflate it. Let's not challenge me on it. What I am telling you is that I think there are a number of things. There has been a continuity in the board. There have been discussions in the board, okay? And there are expectations of things from our board meetings that we've all set, we've said need to happen, okay? I would have taken this as an opportunity to reset that and render that remarkably explicit. It doesn't seem to be the flavor of the board. The flavor of the board, the flavor of the board seems to be, the way I'm reading this, is reading Toni's goals here to kind of say, okay, there are some things I'm going to do. There's some general directions and things I'm going to do that continue off of what we're doing. I would have given Toni the time and space, I wouldn't have done this now. I would have given Toni the time and space to get our arms a little bit more around the board, come back to us in September and say, hey, look, okay, now I've had a chance to talk to everybody. I know what you guys may have been told or not been told, but here's what's realistic to actually get accomplished. Here's the things that I think they're committed that can get done. Here are the things that, by the way, now that I understand where we really are, they're not realistic to get done. There are going to be some of those that are going to pop up. But, you know, that's where I would have landed. I would have liked to have seen from Toni maybe three goals. If she expands them to five, that would be great. I wouldn't want to see seven, seven or eight. So I'm in a very different place than the rest of the board is, but I'm not going to stop progress.
So I'll rephrase what I was saying more broadly, which is, I had interpreted Peter's comment as there are things that he felt had been committed in the past that he would expect that aren't here. I would encourage all of us to spend the next month. And if you feel like there's something that's really missing, I think we need to make that explicit and bring that up because I don't think it would be fair to judge at the end of the year on something that hasn't been made explicit. And maybe along the lines of, you were saying, kind of, when do we do check-ins? I've written a little note to myself, like, ooh, maybe we need to think about checkpoints or a review. And I'll go back and look at our schedule and see if there's some way we might want to build an in that makes sense so that we can do a little follow-up along the way and then give ourselves all a chance to rethink, okay, wow, is there something else without giving her 100 million Post-its that, you know, might be good to do?
Ms. Rayman.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to that checkpoint concept because if there is some specificity that some of us are envisioning, it gives us an opportunity to talk about it as a team as opposed to waiting to the end and say, no, I thought, you know, to Peter's point, the program review before the budget is going to be extremely important. And we don't want to find out in November, December, that it hasn't been done yet. I'm a little concerned by some of the comments I've heard in the last couple minutes. I want to make it really clear that you will be evaluated by the entire board, not by individuals on the board, based on individual preferences among these accomplishments. So whatever we commit to as a group of eight is going, even a majority of the eight, that's what we're going to evaluate you on. It's not on past commitments by other superintendents or assumed expectations. I want to make that absolutely clear. Also, I want to commend you for actually studying up on our district six months in advance, or however many months, and coming in with a set of goals right away to present to the board. We have never had such rapid response from the incoming leader. And I think it's absolutely fantastic because it gives us a running start. So I want to thank you for that.
Ms. O'Neill.
I have a question. When we're referring to the program review, are we referring to the document that Ralph showed us towards in May or June? Then he said it was going to take two years at least. So I think if we're talking about expecting a program review, we ought to maybe at some point have Toni give us some guidelines as to what she can deliver because that is a huge project. And so we should be fair and say, what part of that do we expect? And then the other thing, I think that maybe, that the Friday notes and whatever, that things can be referenced to the goals or something so that we'd be aware, it wouldn't be a surprise like in January or wherever. We could say, oh, yeah, like, yeah, she's been talking about that goal in a Friday. Thanks.
Ms. Dow.
Staying with that theme, I think that it's great that you're putting out all six goals, but there also could be things that are unknowns and I don't want you to be, set yourself up for failure. And, you know, not on, you know, having said on company boards, we set out, you know, strategic plan each year and we do quarterly updates. And listen, give us a heads up if you're going to miss a minute, right? And you're going to say, goal one, I'm going to be a month behind or whatever. And that's maybe where we should do quarterly updates. I don't think it needs to be monthly. But I kind of like the idea of quarterly because that gives you a big chunk, you know? And I know we don't work in quarters, but like that. Something along those lines so that we all feel like, you know, we're progressing, but I'm also not going, I mean, six goals is a lot. So I want you to feel comfortable.
There's also a natural prioritization that's going to happen, such as the communication goals going to hinge on your hiring the communications director. The budget comes faster than you know. I'm sure you're already working on it. So you know those program reviews have to happen in a specific timeframe so that they're relevant for that. So that's up to you to manage, obviously, but the fact that you presented them and said you feel that you can manage it, I'm for that. Any other discussion on this? Somebody want to make a motion to accept Dr. Jones's goal? Dr. Francis, is there a second? Ms. O'Neil. All right, all those in favor of accepting Dr. Jones's request? All right, so that passes eight-zero, thank you. And just to point there, if there are things out there that we think are pending, please do share those with Dr. Jones so that she can get a status update and know that it's on her plate. Dr. Francis, is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All those in favor? Eight-zero, we are adjourned.